Yeah, call the order of the Whitlock City Council Meeting of June 2018. Sandy, please call the roll.
Janne Lillo.
President.
Bogos.
President.
Jaworski.
Here.
Kaski.
Excused.
Levon.
Here.
Saxas.
Here.
Salater.
Excused. Yeah, we will swear in complete assurance, Mayor.
I have some Mr. Anthony Pettit, please. And are you having someone on the line for you? When you have one there. Lovely. Raise your left hand on the line. Raise your right hand and repeat next to me. I, Anthony C. Pettit.
I, Anthony C. Pettit.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the laws of the Charter of the City of Whitlock.
The laws of the Charter of the City of Whitlock.
And that I will, in all respects.
And that I will, in all respects.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
As a patrolman of the City of Whitlock Police Department.
As a patrolman of the City. As a patrolman of the City of Whitlock, Whitlock Police Department.
During my continuance and set office.
During my continuance and set office.
Thank you. Raise your left hand on the line and repeat after me. I, Isaac T. Petrick.
I, Isaac T. Petrick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the laws of the Charter of the City of Whitlock.
And the laws of the Charter of the City of Whitlock.
And that I will, in all respects.
And that I will, in all respects.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
As a sergeant of the City of Whitlock Police Department.
As a sergeant of the City of Whitlock Police Department.
During my continuance and set office.
During my continuance and set office.
And thank you, guys, and wish you both a safe, long career.
Okay, approval of council minutes of June 11, 2018. Councilor Biallo.
As Council President, I'd like to make a motion to abstain from adjournment Jaworski from the approval of the minutes.
I second. Moved by Councilor Biallo and seconded by Councilor Bogos to allow Councilman Jaworski to abstain from voting on the minutes of June 11. Discussion. Sandy, please call the roll.
Janne Lillo.
Yes.
Bogos.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Saxas.
Yes.
Make a vote.
Councilor Biallo.
Make it, Council President, a motion to approve the minutes of June 11 council meeting.
Second. Moved by Councilor Biallo and seconded by Councilor Bogos to approve the council minutes of June 11, 2018. Discussion. Sandy, please call the roll.
Janne Lillo.
Yes.
Bogos.
Yes.
Jaworski.
I abstain.
Levon.
Yes.
Saxas.
Yes.
Reports and communications from the mayor's safety director.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. So, one thing I've been working on with Service Director and folks from NOPEC, like I talked earlier, we had a grant for about $50,000 a year for this year and the next two years. We spent most of this year already just windows, just upgrading buildings a little bit, LED lights. So, the next project we're working on is looking at LED streetlights, converting some of the streetlights, just one of the bills that we. It's an ongoing cost to the city, looking to lower that. So, we're getting some quotes and pricing. We're going to try out a few smaller streets to see how it works. And because they're on a bit of waiting list, so it might be towards the middle of next year that that process starts. But I figured if out of the $50,000, we could spend $30,000 a year on lights that we have running almost continually, besides the police and fire stations that are running 24/7, just try to be more efficient with those dollars. Reminder, the board docs training is this Thursday at 6:00 PM. Got the laptops in just earlier today. Somehow have those ready. Also, this Thursday is the next mini council at Liberty Gardens, 6:00 to 8:00 PM. It was well received two weeks ago. Might have three or four of them next year. This is just sort of a dry run, but you know, there's a few people at the Greek House getting dinner beforehand, a few people getting some snacks, nice food across the street, so not a huge economic boom by any means, but it was nice just getting people out and about, residents talking to each other. A lot of people enjoyed it. It's an underused part as it is, so I got a lot of good feedback there. I did receive a public notice from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in regards to, it's a wetland that's there just for JAV supply corporations. So, essentially, there's wetlands on part of the property. And anytime, I guess per state or per region, you have to maintain a certain acreage of wetlands. So, he's in the process of buying other wetlands to, I guess, diminish this wetlands bill on these wetlands. So, they're taking comments until July 16th. I'm not sure who else received this notice. I sent him a couple questions, but he's just collecting things at this point until July 16th, so it's. He already owns the property, just looking to get that wetlands classification removed. But if anyone has questions on that or to contact, be happy to provide. I got it from Councilman Saxas. So, again, I'm not sure who else has that. There is a business filling out an application for a tax abatement through Uglade Avenue CRA, what's currently in place. I'll provide more details once everything is confirmed, so might have a call meeting later in the summer on exactly timeframe, but just as a heads up, there's some good news on Uglade Avenue with some possible development and jobs as well. And that is all I have for tonight.
Any questions or comments for the mayor's safety director?
Thank you, Mayor.
Reports and communications from the director of law.
Well, thank you, Mr. Council President. Just want to point out Resolution 2018-17 on the agenda tonight. This is also, this is the second ordinance regarding the tax levy. The one you passed by emergency at last meeting was the one just to get the auditor to certify. We've plugged the numbers we received from the auditor into this now, so this will really, you'll be voting on getting this to the voters, to the electorate, if you choose to pass this. This will be under three readings. I have no other comments. Thank you.
Any questions or concerns for the law director? Mr. Eeler. I have no communications. Does anybody have any additions or amendments to the agenda? Any other move on the administrators? Please chief vice.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple pieces of information to add to my monthly report. On the June 19th, we had the Special Olympics Court Room, actually starts in Nashville, that goes to town in the downtown of Columbus. We've participated in that for the last 20 years. So, the number of businesses in the city contributed to that to the work we've done. June 23rd, we had the bike auction. We have those bought over three years, and we have to get rid of all of them except for like three of them. Put $810 back into the city's coffers. And then we had the bike rodeo on Saturday, and like 50 kids showed up, which is a little surprising because it would have been a little bit iffy, but that came off very well. And then Markaram Festival went off very well, we had a couple of minor incidents, it was already kind of, took care of those, but the event was well received by our residents. That's all I have. Any questions or comments for the chief?
Thank you, chief vice. Fire chief Powers.
Thank you, Council President. I have nothing to add to my previous decision to make report.
Any questions or comments for the fire chief? Thank you, Chief Powers. My name's Kirkwood Dolls.
The only thing that I have to inform council tonight is that on Thursday, June 21st, I have received 470 signatures of a referendum petition in regard to the fact that one of the ordinance 2018 is down. So, just wanted to let you guys know that. That'll go to the board of elections on the first part of July because it has to stay at the city for 10 days.
Any questions or comments for the fire chief? Thank you, Ms. Dolls. Engineer Pramika.
Thank you, Council President. One thing to add to my weekly report, last week, we sent out requests to contractors to receive quotes for street striping for Uglade Avenue, Ridge Road, and Lakeland Boulevard, basically just to do the main lines, center lines, and lane lines for safety purposes. And we expect to get those in a couple of weeks beginning of July.
Any questions or comments for the city? Councilman Jaworski.
Pete, just one for you. Maple Street, that was something that council had in the capital budget. At what point will you guys be finished with the specs and get that out to bid?
We hope to get that ready for a bid in mid-July.
And then that would be what kind of start date would you guys be?
We probably won't start that until, have a contract and everything else until September, mid-September even. Typically, the way those waterline jobs are going too, they might not even start construction until the winter, over the winter months, this way to avoid tearing up the road.
Heaven.
To maintain it throughout the winter, so.
So, it's just a good chance that there will be no significant construction occurring?
There's a chance of that, correct. Yeah. I mean, it's up to the contractor if he wants to maintain the road throughout the winter, or if he wants to wait until spring. The completion date for that project won't be until fall of 2019, so that would be able to be accomplished next summer.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the city engineer? Thank you, Mr. Pramika.
Thank you.
Service director Dan Rosa.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are continuing with our routine maintenance on buildings and properties. We did have a large tree branch fall at Colby Park over by the pool. Right now, we have everything caution taped. We did remove the branch, actually, the mayor called on Saturday night. We took care of it Sunday with the guys who came in to do the trash. We're probably going to remove the whole tree. We're going to start shooting cuts and start trimming probably on Wednesday because it barricaded off. The salt prices came in for the 2018-19 season. I was surprised on how low they were. They came in at $44.39. I was surprised because of just the supply and demand and how difficult it was to even get salt this year. And that, we do have one other thing, you know, we're trying to do creative things as far as to increase revenue. We did do a road opening for a contractor. I don't think I reported this. It was on Grenic. They had to do a waterline repair. That was a two-inch waterline, so the owner of the building was responsible for it. They dug the road, backfilled everything, and then we just finished the road ourselves and charged them 1,500 bucks. And we just put money in for our material and the next, we've got to check in with the rest of the city coffers, so other than that, I can leave my report.
Any questions or comments for the service director? Thank you, Mr. Dan Rosa. What would you say?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I just want to add one thing to add. I'm worried with our city engineer, while communication is coming into the city, their internet and phone system, we'll be seeing installing cables all throughout the city. And he's got the plans, just wrapped them up this week, so I'm just getting calls on that's what's going on. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments for the councilman Jaworski?
Ray, for those of us that are fed with our current cable and/or satellite services, any word on when while may actually be needing to offer residence packages?
You know, I don't know. I'm expecting maybe about six months, the time to get the whole system in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the building commissioner? Thank you, Mr. Sax. Recreation director Stott.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Another, we're going to be going on recess here pretty soon, so I wanted to just bring up your attention to a couple of different activities that are happening in July. Number one, we have our next concert in the park down at the Community Senior Center on Tuesday, July 10th. Yankee Pankey is going to be in the group. They are a subgroup from the Pop-Tarts. They're country music type style singers. And the car show was moved to that day. That was the rain date. We had that potential rain for the June concert, so we did move it to July, so want to make people aware of that. And there'll be a food truck there also, so that's Tuesday, July 10th, 6:30 to 8:30. Also, like to make counsel everyone aware of the next movie night up here at Colby Park. It's going to be July 20th, Friday night. We'll have a bounce house, face painting, and a food truck here also. Star Wars will be the featured presentation, Star Wars: The Last Jedi, so bring your lightsabers if you want.
Yes.
But it should be a good time. And our inaugural 5K one amount fund run walk is going to be on Saturday, July 28th, on the Community Senior Center. Just this week, we got some donations from JAB Industries and from the Fairbridge Hotel. So, we have those race forms still online. There's still plenty of time to sign up for those, for that event. So, just a couple July events that are coming up for you. That's back to my report.
Any questions or comments for recreation director? Thank you, Mr. Stott. I'll now open the floor to allow for audience participation. If anyone would like to address with the city council, please stand, state your name and address for the third records. Each person will be allowed to have the floor for five minutes. Would anyone like to address with the city council?
Front future in 3030162 Ridgeview Drive. I have three questions. East Lake issue permits for scrapping, will Whitlock take it into consideration to issue these permits to generate some funds for the city? My second question is, the house I'm meeting for had the apron and sidewalks in part of the driveway dunk of a water problem, AKA bird bathing. I called the city hall, the lady told me she had a water problem, just like my sidewalks go good. I also noticed the city is fixing sidewalks that were damaged by tree laundry, but this council, not the new members, and the old mayor overlooked mine. Those sidewalks were against Whitlock code the day that house was transferred in my night. I told Ray Sax on June 28th of 2017, the sidewalks were bad, and how they were backfilled, and how they backflowed. Mr. Sax made a mistake. The bottom line, Mr. Sax made a mistake. I want them fixed by the city to Whitlock's code. This was wrong. How council and the old mayor let him get away with this, his mistake. I was in the right. It was when Whitlock ordinance. Number three, in the fall, when I brought up these issues of 30162 Ridgeview Drive, I asked if he was qualified or certified to do this job. Never got an answer from city council or the old mayor. Never seen no certifications, no state cert, nothing, nothing. I got an issue down there, he bullshitted me, and he got away with it, and I'm not going to let it go. Those sidewalks need to be repaired. You guys are tearing up all over here. He made a mistake, it should have been called out. I had a double bypass, I'm going through prostate cancer, and I got to deal with his mistake. It's going to be a year. It's wrong, and you guys all let me down up there. If he makes mistakes, everybody makes mistakes. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address with the city council? Go ahead, Ms. Dolls.
I'm Barbara Sims, 1409 East 300th Street, and I am here to talk about JAB. For those of you who aren't aware, it is an active commercial crushing processing facility operating in a general business district. I want JAB to stop the destruction. They've already destroyed acres of forested land and its wildlife. Created in medics on Uglade Avenue, the city can validate and verify that there have been numerous complaints. No one in the community seems to know what's going on there. It's a dump. Why there are no notes in the past three years from the planning commission for the economic developer on this project is a mystery. Why is everything so hush-hush? I guess she'll answer my questions later.
You don't usually get no answers.
Sir, does she have the talk room?
Sir, she has it.
Floor, would you please? No comments.
Sorry, I shouldn't even be up here.
Yes, there is a site engrading plan that was issued in July 2015, and the plan states that the soils be leveled with Uglade Avenue. Obviously, it isn't. And I'd like to know who is responsible for enforcing compliance. But now, they want to fill in the wetlands on the property under the pretext of creating a shopping center. And why doesn't the community know about this? And really, how feasible is it? Number one, building on fill. And I'd like to know who's going to be responsible for monitoring the density and compaction, and is this data available? Number two, with all the vacant buildings in Whitlock, decline in shopping malls, and the Amazon facility already in Uglade, how feasible is this plan? I would like JAB to stop until the city has presented with a concrete plan that can verify permitted tenants along with data to prove feasibility. It's just a bogus plan to allow JAB to keep dumping that in the end will just be a wasteland.
Who would enforce those things for that EPA or Department of Defense?
We're constantly in communication with EPA. The Army Corps of Engineers, as the mayor brought up, they submitted their application for wetlands of transference. Everything's on the up and up. There's nothing being hidden, there's nothing secretive. The man is developing his property. He's being all state goes.
Are you finished, Dan? Or you didn't want to say?
Oh, I.
I'm just curious, you might want to say something.
Well, okay, there's data of everything, you know, the compactability, like what's the fracture? Is all this data, is this available for the public? It matters because this is just a smoke in the air plan.
It's his property, he can do whatever he wants.
Well, it is our city.
That's fine.
Then it's going to, if, it's just.
If he wants to not compact it, that's his prerogative. He is compacting it, I might add, but if he doesn't want to.
But are the specifications, where is there data available?
He's developing his property.
Everything's fine because it's.
No. If he goes to build on something, he'll have to show, prove that he's building it on something structural. Until then, he can be filling it with cow poop.
And the city would allow that?
It's his property, man. He's not though.
Other people who own property in the city can't do whatever they want.
Be happy to discuss it with you. Councilman Sax.
All right, two things. I just want to, one thing I get a lot of calls on, Pete, is, okay, so I guess the 480 area, there was fill there, and then it developed, and then buildings were collapsing. People are worried about things of that nature. It's his property. So, I just want to state that fact. The second thing, now on the letter from the Army Corps of Engineers, do they want comments from people if they have to, you know, express their feelings on the way?
Yes, the purpose of the letter was to get comments and actually to include the entire community on the feelings and the feasibility.
Straight people want to know if they want to write, the Army Corps of Engineers, they showed a difference. If anybody wants a copy, they could, contact me or someone, or me. That's all.
Would anybody else like to address with the city council? Mr. Bittens.
Hi, good evening. Steve Bittens, 29167 Ridge Road. I've talked a couple weeks in a row about my concerns regarding the proposed zoning referendum, and I don't want to repeat myself significantly, but I, with the, now the rush to kind of get the zoning referendum issue passed by council and on to the ballot, I'm really concerned that this is the exact example of the type of procedure that warrants a procedure within the city's charter for the control of how its properties rezone. The measure you're putting in front of voters is just as simple, yes or no for voters. All they can do is say yes or no. You're proposing to delete from the charter all reference to changes to the zoning, as I understand it, which means from, if that matter passes after that, any change to the zoning is handled solely by council. And although the ordinancees currently provide for a procedure that involves planning, commission, and public hearings, city council can by themselves in fact change that. And so, this idea that you're holding three special meetings, three days in a row, is the type of abuse, and I'm not saying you're engaging in disuse, that past cities have used to cause quick rezonings of properties to the detriment of the citizens. If you look back when the referendum zoning became really popular in northeast Ohio, there were suburbs in Twinsburg, in Strongton, in North Royalton, in Solon, and through the '70s and '80s, New Michigan, farms and other areas were getting massively quickly rezoned, causing great value for the developers and harm to the neighbors and the folks around them. I really think that this is a matter that if you spent a month of July working on crafting, instead of a deletion simply of the charter provision, but a new charter provision that provides established procedure for the rezoning, you could get a lot more voters in the November election who'd be willing to support this change that allows us to expedite the rezoning for businesses and keep business moving, but still provides protection and safety to the voters. They know a future council isn't going to quickly cause rezoning to occur. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address with the city council? Mr. Morgan.
My name is Erica Corbin. I live at 30319 Leeford Road. This father will be a levy on the ballot asking the residents to improve ones for our safety forces. I realize the city needs to increase revenue to help balance the budget. While there has been an effort to draw businesses to the city, it will take time to get the amount of revenue the city needs from those. So, in the meantime, it will fall on the residents to help make up some of the loss. So, this brings me to my question I have, and I don't expect an answer now, but I feel that the residents do deserve an answer to this before Election Day. The question is, if the levy doesn't pass, what does it mean for the city? Obviously, you'll need to make cuts, but I want to know what cuts are we going to be looking at? Will the police statute be cut? Will one or maybe both of the pools be closed, or will the recreation programs be impacted? Or will the upkeep of parks or roads be impacted? The residents deserve to know what will happen if the levy doesn't pass, so we can plan accordingly.
Mayor Rivers, I'll answer that. As I mentioned in previous meetings, there will be more communications. Once these three meetings are done, we know for sure it's going to be on the ballot in the next Whitlock Connection article, we have a town hall this fall. And I guess just from a general standpoint, obviously, you haven't started doing the budget yet for next year, but if this doesn't pass, and I can tell you for sure, we're going to close Ginger Pool and probably have to lay out anywhere from seven to 10 people. And we don't have seven to 10 secretaries that we can just get rid of at that point. I mean, I'm just, that's a very general statement, but it's, in terms of $800,000, we lost very close to millions from ABB. We're asking for about $800,000, so if we don't have $800,000 coming in next year, we're going to have to remove that from the budget. However, we need to deal with, whether that's vehicles, and it's going to be people. People are the largest part of our budget. So, it would be, I can't tell you how many police, how many, we can't lay out many firefighter fighters because of the FEMA grant we received, but I can't tell you how that would break down. That'd be a decision the council will have to make as well. But there would be worse cuts than we were talking about last year, I would say.
I just think that's something that the residents deserve to know, basically.
So, I agree.
Not only does the rats have to know that, it's like, okay, this is what the city's going to need to do if the levy doesn't pass.
Right, and I agree.
Would anybody else like to address with the city council? Mr. Murray.
Don Murray, 29105 Ridge Road. A quick question regarding the levy. It's very, very unclear right now. All I've seen is three mills, okay? I'd like to know a couple things about it. Number one, is it permanent, ongoing? Or would you, I would rather see you do a five-year deal and then. Or would you, I would rather see you do a five-year deal and address it, get the can down the road a little bit here, instead of making that permanent. That's one thing. And I'm not sure how you can spend that money. I think it's limited to capital equipment and stuff.
Police and fire.
Police and fire stuff. Not firemen and firefighters, that's my understanding.
Personnel.
Correct.
Personnel is what it requires.
Okay, I stand corrected to that. But I would, I would much more support, be able to support better a temporary levy to get you through the rough spot. What if the city grows up? Are you going to cancel this levy down the road? Could you?
If it made sense, I just can't see that happening in the long run. I mean, it's, the costs go up every single year, that's why we're only asking for 800. We quite could use more money, but we want to make it up in other areas as well, as I stated in previous meetings. And the reason we want to fire the safety only, that's one of the few levies you can have as a continuing levy. Other levies are five years or less. This Band-Aid approach, we should have had levies on 10 years ago for police and fire on roads. We didn't, so we're unfortunately getting into it now, but if, if there's windfalls down the road, I'd like to remove it. I can't tell you when that would be.
Would anyone else, council, address what was city council? Councilor Jorski, sorry.
Mr. Murray, I think at least when we had the discussion about this levy, one of the things that council was also looking at is the ability to repeal the former charter change that we made. And I think something like this, if our finances can get straightened out, would give us that ability to move money back into capital improvement that we are not, that we have, council has liberty to do what we want with it, if you will. In other words, we're not forced by the state to spend X amount on roads when we need fire or police equipment. If we can get to a point to where we can make that, if we can go to the residents and ask for, repeal the charter change, it's going to help, from a capital improvement standpoint, the strength of this city and in reinvesting in our sewers, our roads, and all the city equipment as well.
Thank you, Mr. Jorski. That was the second part of my question that I was holding back on. I would dearly love to see this charter return to earmarking money from the income tax into capital improvements. And I do understand that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Oles, but you have an inside note about four and a half or five mills that is designated for capital improvements?
I believe it's two.
Only two?
Yeah. About $500,000 a year, Mr. Murray.
That 10-mill levy is split between us and you, and I thought it was 5, 6, and 4, 4.
No, right now, with capital for these two mills, police and fire pensions are .3 mills each. The general fund, the general operating...
It's more functional. As an additional point, that inside village rose is not rolled back like other levies are.
And, Mr. Murray, I think that was one of the mistakes that past councils had made, was continuously moving money from capital to the general fund, and it's caught up with us. There's no doubt about that. Our roads, our sewers show.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one last comment again publicly. I know there's still questions about the details of this, and that's because it's still in motion. We just got the language back from the county auditor. Once it's on the ballot, I know that there'll be a lot more communications over the next few months.
We got to know that.
Exactly. Everyone will be informed by that point.
Would anyone else like to address what was city council? Mr. Corbin?
Jim Corbin, 30319 Ridge Road. Just a quick question. Can you explain excuse the absence of the city?
If they let me know beforehand that I can make the meeting, they're excused.
Okay, so, this was the last meeting, 13 is the count today, 10 if you don't count the duty bits on the same day. Why are you empowering her to just take these off? I mean, she was, she should have known when she was running for council, the time commitment was necessary. She's not fulfilled her duties as she was elected to do. She doesn't go to keep work with the people as part of that duty, and you keep laying her doing it.
Mr. Corbin, I'm not responsible. She is a representative of the residents of the city. She's a council and large representative.
Okay, so as a resident, I have to stop excuse her?
I think the residents should talk to her about the issues.
But you're blaming her to do it.
Sir, I, she has a full-time job. It takes her a day. I have to excuse her from the meeting. Other people have missed these meetings because they're excused.
I mean, you don't understand.
As a council, as a council, I cannot punish her like that. The council is whole, we punish her, I believe, in the Charter of, it says, 763. I think it's three in a row or several in a row. In a row, correct?
Correct.
We should miss three council meetings in a row.
Well, she will.
Pardon me?
She will.
But those committee meetings are not council meetings. I think it's...
It is council. Well, you have two special councils.
I believe she will be here. I said, I texted her that she will be here. So is council whole, or is council president responsible for removing her? Just out of curiosity.
I'm sure they have a contractor. I'm just looking it up. She's...
I, I, I agree with you. She represents the city. The resident should be the one that discusses what they're, they voted for her, and she will assess it with her.
And just apparently, I have this complaint that, I am also disappointed that Capitol built there and failed to manage it publicly as you did, council and people do. And the logic of it, here we go. Keep it publicly managed, but missing other votes. Nothing is that outwardly more than...
Would anyone else address what was city council? Would anyone else? Yes, sir.
Ed Calawich, 29831 Phillips Avenue. Went to the city of Wicklow, stopped running and hiding from the blatant revenue windfall we'll get by putting red light cameras up and catching speeders, the red light runners and the litter bugs who throw their garbage in your cigarette butts out on our street. The windfall be massive. You've all gotten my game plan. I put 100 bays blocks by a muck hole. It's ridiculous. We don't have enough police officers to sit at every red light and watch this outrageous abuse. And I'm not going to stop until a kid gets run over by one of these idiots. I'm going to speak louder and more often and louder on this subject. Thank you.
Would anyone else address what was city council? Sir, is there something else I could add before you guys?
Can I say something better now?
Well, I would see if there's anybody else I'd like to address with city council first or the first act.
All right.
Anybody else that addresses what was city council? Okay, I'll let you go one more time, Mr. Murray.
I just want to say, he allowed that house to transfer my name. When he knew those sidewalks were never with those ordinance or code, it's wrong, they got to be replaced.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else address what was city council?
I had one quick one. I think the service department for cleaning the way was a lot of stop signs and...
Sir, sir.
She's 82, she's pretty sick.
Okay, can you leave the room then, sir?
All right. I have a little meeting and I'll show up here.
Sorry, sir.
I want to thank the service department for cleaning out a lot of stop signs and pedestrian crossing signs covered by foliage. And a great job.
Great job.
Well, thanks for helping us out and thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else address what was city council?
Well, I may just ask my question. I didn't get this one. How come there were absolutely no filling commission or any notes or anything from on this JAB project when it started? Not a single note in three years of filling commission nor the economic developer. I mean, it's, it is a mystery, and I didn't get an answer to your question.
From our understanding, he said he does not have to go to the planning commission until he is, he has a plan or a developer coming in to do the work. At this point in time, there is no plan.
There's a plan without a plan, right?
It's his property again. He doesn't have to have a specific plan until he's ready to develop on it. From what I understand, my name's right on that.
You're correct, council person.
Would anybody else address what was city council? If that'll mark, all participations complete. Committee reports. Committee all met at 6:00 PM to discuss zoning referendum. Present, Yella Lobo, LaVon Sackus, skewed work in council lot. Also present, Ice Frimica, Dole, Sack, Powers. Mayor Barish began talking about, said he's been talking about this for about a year now, and this process would expedite businesses coming into the city from about maybe a year with zoning issues to three to four months. Councilman Bogo asked Lauderick Azili about what Galloway did zoning referendum, which Lauderick replied that both ways are legal. Council President LaVon stated that he was informed by the charter review commission that the majority was in favor of eliminating the mandatory zoning referendum. And also, this ordinance doesn't change anything as far as council, at this moment, it only allows for the voters to make a choice. The committee recommends to council that the authorized Lauderick area legislation submit to the electors for the city of Wicklow to remove mandatory zoning referendum from the charter. This item was reported out of committee. Any other committee reports? Commission reports? Councilman Jorski?
Planning commission met on June 7, 2018, and they approved a lot consolidation at 29550 Euclid Avenue. They approved a plan to construct a 2,900 square foot addition to Sweetberry Fresh Market located at 30022 Euclid Avenue. And they also approved a lot split at 29060 Anderson Road. The committee also, or the commission, I beg your pardon, also discussed, I apologize for not being at the meeting earlier tonight, the zoning referendum change. And the planning commission would like to talk with council if possible about the potential changes and how it would potentially affect the planning commission and questions that planning commission members may have about the referendum.
Any other commission reports? Councilman Seckes?
Yes, Parks and Recreation Commission met on Thursday, June 14 at 6:00 PM for its annual park tour. Every year, everybody on the Parks and Recreation, we go on a bus and we go to every park and make sure everything's tip-top shape, which all the parks look excellent. And the service director comes with to make sure, and so that was very nice. And then, they're also, once again, Recreation Director Stock mentioned the Christmas in July 5K jog and a one-mile fun run. That's going to be on Saturday, July 28 from 8:00 AM till noon.
8:30, Joe.
8:30, it starts till noon, and the starting line is at Senior Center. And if you're taking information, you can contact him or you go to the city website, has all that information. It's going to be a fun day. First time we do the 5K here, so, so they have great, I think the prices are very reasonable, and it's going to be a fun time. So that's everything I wanted to report. Thank you.
Any other commission reports? Seeing no old business or new business moving under ordinances?
Ordinance number 2018-25, ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Wicklow, Ohio. Proposed removal of Articles 11, Section 3 mandatory zoning referendum of the charter of the city of Wicklow, Ohio. Second reading. Ordinance number 2018-26, ordinance amended chapter 1327.01, temporary uses of the codified ordinances of the city of Wicklow, Ohio. Third reading.
This is the first adoption.
Second. Moved by Councilman Sackus, seconded by Councilman Bogo to adopt ordinance 2018-26 as presented. Discussion? Standing this fellow role.
Yannalila?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jorski?
Yes.
LaVon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2018-27, ordinance amended chapter 95101, use of parks, refreshments, identification cards, the codified ordinances of the city of Wicklow, Ohio. Third reading.
Adoption.
Moved by Councilman Sackus, seconded by Councilman Bogo to adopt ordinance number 2018-27 as presented. Discussion? Standing this fellow role.
Yannalila?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jorski?
Yes.
LaVon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2018-28, ordinance amended chapter 951.08, prohibited conduct of codified ordinances of the city of Wicklow, Ohio. Third reading.
Adoption.
Moved by Councilman Sackus, seconded by Councilman Bogo to adopt ordinance 2018-28 as presented. Discussion? Councilman Jorski?
I think it's a mistake to allow alcohol in the city's parks.
Further discussion? Standing this fellow role.
Yannalila?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jorski?
No.
LaVon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2018-34, ordinance limiting an assessment for unpaid bills and costs of buying noxious or poisonous weeds, vines, tree limbs, or grasses, or other found parcels of land in the city of Wicklow, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
This is Sackus.
Moved by Councilman Sackus, seconded by Councilman Bogo to suspend the rules of council in place. Ordinance 2018-34 on third and final reading. Discussion? Standing this fellow role.
Yannalila?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jorski?
Yes.
LaVon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Adoption.
Moved by Councilman Yannalila, seconded by Councilman Bogo to adopt ordinance 2018-34 as presented. Discussion? Standing this fellow role.
Yannalila?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jorski?
Yes.
LaVon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2018-35, ordinance authorizing the purchase of one new 2019 Ford F-250 pickup truck produced by the Service Department of the City of Wicklow, Ohio, through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program, declaring an emergency.
Suction.
Second. Moved by Councilman Yannalila, seconded by Councilman Sackus, suspend the rules of council in place. Ordinance 2018-35 on third and final reading. Standing this fellow role.
Yannalila?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jorski?
Yes.
LaVon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Move by Councilman Yannalila, seconded by Councilman Sackus to adopt ordinance 2018-35 as presented. Discussion? Standing this fellow role.
Yannalila?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jorski?
Yes.
LaVon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2018-36, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of one new 2020 model year single axle cab and chassis with requested equipment produced by the Service Department of the City of Wicklow, Ohio, through the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program, declaring an emergency.
Second. Moved by Councilman Sackus, seconded by Councilman Bogo to suspend the rules of council in place. Ordinance 2018-36 on third and final reading. Discussion? Standing this fellow role.
Yannalila?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jorski?
Yes.
LaVon?
Yes.
Sackas?
Yes.
Adoption.
Second. Moved by Councilman Sackas, seconded by Councilman Bogo to adopt ordinance 2018-36 as presented. Discussion? Standing in this fellow role.
Yann Lilo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Dorsky?
Yes.
Lavon?
Yes.
Sackas?
Yes.
Resolution number 2018-17, a resolution declaring intent to proceed with election on the question of an additional tax in excess of the 10 million, or 10 mil limitation. First reading. Resolution number 2018-18, a resolution adopting the tax budget of the city of Wicklup, Ohio from the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, submitting same to the authority of Lake County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Moved by Councilman Sackas, seconded by Councilman Bogo to suspend the rules of council in place. Resolution 2018-18 on third and final reading. Discussion? Standing in this fellow role.
Yann Lilo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Dorsky?
Yes.
Lavon?
Yes.
Sackas?
Yes.
Adoption.
Second. Moved by Councilman Sackas, seconded by Councilman Bogo to adopt resolution 2018-18 as presented. Discussion? Standing in this fellow role.
Yann Lilo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Dorsky?
Yes.
Lavon?
Yes.
Sackas?
Yes.
Any other legislation? Ms. Lane is...
Motion for adjournment, anyone?
Take a motion for adjournment.
Second. Moved by Councilman Yann Lilo, seconded by Councilman Sackas. New term. Discussion? Standing in this fellow role.
Yann Lilo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Dorsky?
Yes.
Lavon?
Yes.
Sackas?
Yes.